And, um, Michael, you saw that Councilman Harrison is representing council today, and I don't see him on yet.
Right, that was a council member of Hairston, correct?
Um.
Yeah, there he is.
There he is, okay.
Good morning.
Morning. All right, I think we can get started.
All right. Good morning. In compliance with the notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law and Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meetings will be taken by voice vote. Extinctions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to sure that, ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the Raise Your Hand feature before you asking a question or making a comment. The Raise Your Hand feature can be found in the Participants Panel on the desktop in mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the Raise Your Hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located at the bottom of the WebEx screen. Call it unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on particular matters via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comments on a particular matter.
Michael, you want to call the roll?
Downing.
Present.
Booker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Hall. Hairston.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and good morning, Councilman. We're so excited to have you today to join us. So, welcome, Councilman Hairston.
Thank you, and good morning. Happy to be here with just a fine group of individuals and professionals.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see you. Um, we don't have a huge agenda today, but we have some big design review items, and so we will start with mandatory referrals. This is ordinance number 98-2022. It's citywide ordinance introduced by Councilmember Casey. And this is enacting a new section related to parking recreational vehicles in a residential district. Who's here from the administration to present this?
So what, I don't know if anyone else is here from Casey's office, but we've been in contact with him. What we were asking for is a postponement for this one because we got an email yesterday evening with the notice that there are a few conflicts with the current zoning. Well, I'm sorry, let me not say conflicts, but redundancy with the current zoning. And so they want to have time to try to work out some of the kinks having it come back to planning commission. And so we reached out to him. We reached out to him to let him know.
Okay, would you like us to table it to date certain or just table it in general?
Um, just table it, giving us time to, to meet with him.
Madam Chair, I think Councilman Casey is on the call.
Okay. Uh, is Councilman Casey on?
Yes, I'm here.
Um, all right. Would you like to speak? Would you like us to table this matter?
Uh, when it was tabled, do we know how long it would be?
Or? Uh, we can table it for a date certain in two weeks, or we can just table it and it can come back when it's ready. Um, you know, so.
Can we, can we come back in two weeks?
Sure. Um, we can make a motion to table it for two weeks to the next meeting, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I, I so move that we table this item with a return date certain in two weeks.
In a second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Can we call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. We'll see you, Councilman Casey, in a few weeks. So, thank you very much, and look forward to hearing.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, see you. Uh, now we have mandatory referral ordinance 100-2022. Uh, this is designating Battery Park Powerhouse as a Cleveland landmark. I assume John Pettit's likely here to speak to this one. No?
Madam Chair, Carl Brunges, Cleveland Landmark Staff. I'm here to speak to that one.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, and Chair, members of the Commission. We're here to designate the Battery Park Powerhouse, as you can see, located just off the Edgewater Park area. Next slide, please. This is brought to our attention by the Edgewater Park Block Club, who wanted to see this preserved. The history of the Standard Tool Company starts just down the street from City Hall, um, off Superior and Rockwell, in between, on East 6th, and then they moved out to, uh, off of Cedar, by the railroad tracks by 1895. Next slide, please. During their time out there, they developed a new type of electronic um, for molding, tubing, and such for bicycles, and it was the first time that something like this had been invented here. Uh, next slide, please. So, the Standard Welding Company was formed out because of this to, as an offshoot of the Standard Parts Company. They received this patent for forming the steel for thin-walled, small diameter steel pipes, and they'd be without a crease in it. And by 1902, they were the only company producing these seamless steel rims for automobiles. Next slide. Because of the increase, they announced their new plan that was going out to the West Side. It was a five-acre site, and you can see here in the preliminary drawings, uh, that it was designed and by the Corlitt Engineering Company. And the new plant opened in 1908. This was a coal-burning powerhouse for the new plant. Next slide, please. A little bit more history. Uh, the plant size doubled in a couple of years, and then they expanded by opening a Chicago plant. Next, please. So by 1912, they were the largest producer of auto rims in the United States, and, uh, the Stanwell Tire Rims were on approximately 8,300 cars in the different, uh, Cleveland-based car companies. Cleveland was actually the leader in car companies at the beginning of the whole process there, where you had all these different companies here before Detroit became Motor City. And even by 1914, they were making rims for Ford. Originally, the tire and the rim would be one piece, and then whether you're, whether the rim was bad or not, you would just get rid of it and replace it. But these new rims stood alone. Next, please. And then there's a couple of advertisements from the time. And next. And you can see here from their start at the bottom, uh, can go back one, please? So you have here at the original location down below off of Cedar, then the different growth, as you can see, as it expanded more and more over time. By 1916, how large that facility actually was. Next, please. And some additional advertising throughout this period. Next, please. Lewis Pearlman had actually invented the, the demountable rims, uh, in 1906, but it took a while for the application to be granted, and then there was a whole patent infringement and an injunction to sell the rims that were being created. They could do other rims, but not the Pearlman rims until they came to an agreement in this. Next, please. So eventually, the Perfection Spring Company, which was another automobile-type industry, they eventually, their vice president became the president of, or the president became the vice president of the Pearlman Rim Company. And then in the next step, next slide, please. There was the merger between the Perfection Spring Company with the Standard Welding Company to become the Standard Parts Company, and this eliminated a lot of the conflict with the patent infringement. So this is the largest maker of auto springs in the world and one of the largest producers of auto rims, bands, facings, and the other steel tubes from that earlier patent. In the next couple of years, they started acquiring all these other axle and bearing places, and then growth kept going on. So they were all over Ohio and all over the United States. Next. So then, things, in 1920, they wanted to refinance, but then the Pearlman and some others decided, no, they didn't want to do that. But so then the creditors came calling, and then they had to start liquidating their properties, and the Edgewater Plant was the last property to be sold out of everything, and it was purchased by the National Carbon Division of Union Carbide. Next, please. So we have to take a step back to the National Carbon Company, um, which has its founding in 1881, reorganized the National Carbon in 1886, and then they started purchasing other smaller ones, and the bigger one, the brush. Um, so they, in 1896, they began marketing the first battery intended for widespread consumer use, much like the dry cell. Um, and then in 1898, they developed the C and the D cell batteries, which we still know today. Next. So as they continue to grow, they acquired more and more, including a 50% interest in the American novel, electrical novelty and manufacturing company who made the EverReady flashlights and EverReady batteries. Uh, and then this is the trademark change from American EverReady to EverReady that we still know as today. And then eventually, by 1917, or 1914, they fully purchased it, and then they were bought out by Union Carbide and became the National Carbon Division. Next, please. So the Edgewater Plant, we're back to 1924, on June 1st, National Carbon Division purchases the facility. They start creating the layer-built batteries. There's a popularity in the radio at this time, and production begins in April 1925 and in full operation by 1926. Next, please. Great Depression hits, uh, forcing closures and consolidation of all the other union. And, um, so Long Island, Ohio, New York, New Jersey, San Francisco, everything is being brought here to Cleveland and throughout. And then by the end of the 1930s, domestic battery use is being on the rise due to the portable radio, radio sets and the development of the Mini-Max battery. During the war, uh, the battery for the variable-time proximity fuse was created here. Uh, flashlight production suspended. And you can see that in Cleveland, nearly 6 billion cells, battery cells were produced from 1925 to 1949. Next, please. It's overview of about that time period as well. Next, please. And you can see how everything has expanded here by 1951. Next, please. There were multiple inventions at the, at the plant, and there's a few of them here, including, um, the third one, the cylindrical alkaline magnesium dioxide battery, um, which was um, produced there and branded as EverReady Alkaline Battery. And even though the term Energizer was used as early as the 1960s, that was rebranded as Energizer in March of 1980. Next, please. So 1977, production ends. Union Carbide is sold in 1986 to Rawson Purina, and in 1997, operations cease at the plant. Next, please. Over the next decade, we have the change to the plan of development for Battery Park, and nearly 30 buildings were demolished. The only one left standing was the Battery Park Powerhouse. Next, please. It's home to Terrestrial Brewing Company, which opened in 2017, which they recently announced it plans to expand, putting on a deck and such. Um, so we have our current conditions, the view. So its significance, its, its character, it's got architectural interest, it is connected to the early automobile industry and the battery industry, and its, uh, characteristics are a common visual of the neighborhood and can be seen from the short way. Next, please. And just as I note, the park that is there, that is the brown field that needed remediation and is not able to be built on for a number of years. Uh, everything else was okay to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Carl, uh, Commission members, any comments or discussion?
I, I move approval. Downing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second. McCray Scott.
Okay. Uh, motion and second. Any other comments?
Um, I would like to say I always compliment the research that goes into these. It's, um, Ken, it's the Ken Burns approach, but I appreciate it. It's always nice to learn about things. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, I want to agree with August on that. Um, these are always fascinating histories.
Thank you, and glad that, uh, this piece remains, and it's a beautiful little building. So I agree with this. Um, all right, let's call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. I assume, Carl, that the smokestack is included in this, even as part of the building. I mean, it's an obviously important, um, visual icon from the shortway and other areas. So, um, it's not just the building, but it includes that as well?
Yeah, it includes the entire parcel, which also has the parking lot. As, it's just how it's formed. But yes, any, any physical characteristic on the building is.
Thank you very much. All right, motion carries. Uh, next item. Um, can you move the, yes, okay. Um, so this is the one that, um, I'm going to turn this over to August. Um, and, uh, is RDL or the, um, developer here to speak to this as well? Can I ask who's speaking to this?
Uh, James Green and CD.
Okay, is there anyone from the design team who was here later, uh, who's here earlier?
Yes, Christina from RDL for the design portion.
Okay, so, um, we're, just to save you time, so you don't have to wait till the end. We're going to do these together, and August is going to take this. So we'll, he'll do the mandatory referral, um, and, um, and then, and since you'll present the design, and it's for final approval for, in the Euclid corridor for 9410 Huff, we'll need two motions. Um, I'm just going to swear you in before I turn it over to him, and then he can read this. So, um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury? Yes. Okay, so, um, well, the city will obviously present this, and then you'll present the design, and then we'll have two motions, and, uh, you won't have to wait. So with that, August, um, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Green, are you presenting first?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, members of the Commission. Uh, this is a request by the department to, to make a correction, uh, to ordinance 1123-2021, passed, passed by the, uh, Planning Commission on December 3rd of, uh, 21. Um, what happened here, uh, the development is highlighted in the green here on the site for 9410 Huff. There were three parcels that were included as part of that development. The two parcels in the, uh, sort of pinkish-red, my, my wife would beat me up on the color, so I'll just say pink, and, and, uh, the, um, sort of bluish teal, uh, to the left. So those parcels were 11913013, uh, in the, uh, pinkish color, and 098, uh, to the far right in the pinkish color. The parcel 11913011, uh, in the bluish, uh, green sort of teal color, um, was also part of that amendment to 1123-2021. However, there was, uh, there were questions raised by the planner at that meeting, uh, who then requested that parcel be excluded because it's adjacent to Dixon's Grocery Store on, on the corner there, and they thought there might be a better use for it. Uh, however, when it went to, uh, City Council, the exclusion of that parcel was not communicated to City Council. So City Council actually passed, uh, and approved the amendment for all three parcels. So I'm here today requesting that that third parcel, 11913011, on the car, on the far-left corner there in, in teal, be added back into this amendment and, uh, communicated that way to City Council. The reason for that is because through this development, the developers working with Dixon's Grocery, they're on the corner to help them renovate their property and do other improvements to that open space, that open landbank space there. So there is, um, an effort to, to, uh, redevelop, uh, that corner and help the grocery as part of that, uh, larger development. Uh, it hasn't been finalized yet. We will work, uh, with the developer to ensure there are protections to Dixon Grocery and, and, um, and, and we can always add indeed restrictions, uh, to that effect. So we're asking approval to, to include this parcel back in.
Are, are there any other parties that are presenting or might be impacted that might want to share?
No.
Okay.
I didn't, no, I'm here alone today. Uh, just, uh, you know, simply to add back, uh, to correct what's been, uh, communicated to Council.
Commission members? Comments?
I think we had somebody from the developer. Does she want to speak, or?
I thought they were going to present the design, so I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Christina, would you like to?
Well, if not, Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the motion.
It looks like Councilman Hairston has his hand up. Councilman Hairston?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So because Cleveland City Council has already passed this and includes this parcel, uh, just i- if law is here, if someone is here, can, can weigh in on what, what does this mean if the Commission today passes this and remove this item, uh, in the, in the way that Mr. Green, Commissioner Green has explained today? Wh- wh- what is the process for that, and what does this do with the, uh, passage of, of, of what has been done by Cleveland City Council?
Council, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Michael Bosack, staff. I talked to the Law Department, Councilman, and, uh, they recommended that we do this process so that this aligns with what City Council has already achieved, so there's no conflict. And that's all we're trying to do at this point. It's more of a technicality than anything else.
Okay, great, sounds good. I just wanted to make sure that we were all in line and that we, um, that, that, you know, law has, you know, reviewed this. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman, and Michael. Any further discussion, the Commission or others?
I think we need a second.
I second. McCray Scott.
Okay, um, roll, please.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Any further discussion? Thank you. I think we're going to entertain a design now for, uh, the same parcel or parcels. Thank you. Who's here to present from the design side?
Uh, Christina from RDL.
Oh, it's all yours, Christina.
Okay. Um, will you be forwarding to the presentation?
I have no, uh, presentation files on this, this, uh, PowerPoint.
Maurice, I don't think that's quite accurate. If you could just move past the administrative approvals, it should be right after that.
Uh, so it's in a different section. Thank you.
That's correct. We're entertaining both of these so that the, our applicant can, can move forward without waiting the entirety of the meeting.
Um.
I think we're.
Yeah, you're at the end. Could you go up?
Yep, looking for it. Just one second. There we go. Believe that's it.
Uh, yes. Uh, so we're actually seeking final, uh, design approval on the amenity building to the existing tower building that will be renovated. Uh, so this is actually, uh, the building would be on one of the pink parcels, uh, that we just discussed. So you can just see the, uh, context of where we are in the neighborhood. Um, the gold star is where the many, where the clubhouse building will be sitting, seated. It's between our existing lovely, uh, tower building and Dixon's market. So we're working within kind of the context of, of pairing the clubhouse building to the existing structure that we're working with. Next slide, please. Uh, so these, this is our existing conditions. Um, we have the existing building. There was parking behind the building and the vacant lot that we're picking up as well. Next slide, please. Uh, so these two plans, you can just see the, kind of the overall development. Um, I know we're not seeking approval on kind of the main, uh, portion of development, you know, just the clubhouse, but we want to show kind of the relationships between the two buildings, um, that we will have, uh, parking behind a, a drive aisle. Uh, right now, since we are working with the constraints of the existing, uh, kind of development, we're at, uh, 96, uh, parking spots, which includes six accessible parks, parking spots, uh, which is actually a better yield, uh, than what we have pieced together that was existing. Uh, the parking or the lot in asphalt is in horrible condition back there, so we're making the assumptions of what that layout was. Um, so we're going to place the amenity clubhouse building, um, more at the street level, so we get the engagement, uh, from the street, from the community. Um, because we do want this building to be part of the community, to be potentially used by the community. It's not just a building for the residents. Uh, so we put the access, uh, to the, to the street, then we also have a sidewalk access into the residential building. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just showing the, uh, kind of the landscaping plan of of the building. Next slide, please. Uh, this is our first floor plan, you know, looking for a community room, a fitness room. Uh, we will also have a health suite that can be used by residents and the community, bringing some healthcare. bringing some healthcare surfaces into the neighborhood. Um, and then we also have our required bathrooms, elevator stairs. Next slide, please. The second floor will be used as kind of a business center. We would have computers. Um, kind of, they're thinking of kind of framing us kind of like a WeWork, so a shared working space that can be again used by residents and the community to provide, you know, job training, resume, business development help as well. And again, we're looking at the same, you know, bathroom, storage, there's mechanical space in there as well. You know, as well as the required stair and elevator. We'll also have a small kitchen up, kitchen up there just to kind of help with the comfort level of people working up there as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is our front elevation. One of her comments from Design Review last time was kind of looking at the patterning of the metal panels. So we have redefined the profile of the metal panels, kind of working with the brutalistic nature of the main residential building. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the elevation that would face our residential building. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the rear elevation that will be facing the parking lot. Uh, we did work on the articulation with some accent metal panels. Uh, and we also added just a rear service door. For two reasons, it kind of just helps the flow of the function of the building. And in a worst case scenario, it could be used as a second means of egress. It's not a co-required exit, but it's just additional. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the side that faces Dixon Market. The shaded gray area is roughly where the market would kind of overlap our building. Um, we do have a seven foot between the two buildings. Um, so we also worked on kind of the articulation of this side as well, adding another window, adding the access panels since this elevation will be visible. Next slide, please. Actually, the next two slides are just section cuts through the building. I mean, we're working on some very typical wood trust system here. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the perspective, just seeing how the composition of the clubhouse building kind of works with the residential building, getting the same feel and texture. The residential building was presented to the community. Uh, they were allowed to vote on a few different color schemes. And this, we call this like the beige option, but this beige option was selected by the community. So we're playing off of that color palette. And we're also playing off of the existing masonry brick structure of the building that will be remaining. Uh, next slide, please. And this is just our material palette with the different colors. And we're also showing the two different panel profiles as well. Are there any questions or comments?
Mission members?
I move approval incorporating the comments from Design Review.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Any, any further discussion? I, I do have a question, Christine, to the applicant, I'm sorry. Um, you said that the, the, the main building is going to be back before us?
No, the main, my understanding, the main building does not have to go through Planning Commission? Uh, so this is.
Mr. Chair, Kim Scott, City Planning, and I can clarify.
Sure.
The development is not within a Design Review District. This is coming before you because there is a new building being proposed. And so that's why it's before you. 9410 Huff has been vacant for quite some time and we're really, really excited to see it come back into service as something useful, real estate, excuse me. And so it's before you because of this new building. And I do want to just clarify that regarding the previous action that was made regarding the parcels and why it was that City Planning had recommended to exclude the corner parcel as part of the action that was taken. That was done because we had not had the information that the developer was with the grocery. And, and so that's why that was, that's why that, that was made. So just for clarification, but, so I hope that that is helpful.
Sure. Ms. Scott, I really appreciate that clarification. I do have another question. And will there be an overall landscaping plan developed for this? And that, and that doesn't come under our purview as either? Or is that going to be something that we worked out with, with, with planning staff?
Right, so.
You can opine on that, sorry.
Sure. And, and so part of the, the conditions that were approved yesterday were that the applicant would provide a landscape plan as well as a lighting plan. And that any signage that were being proposed would come back to the local Design Review Committee. We don't, well, because of the action that was just taken, that the project was approved with the conditions that were made by the Euclid Corridor Committee, that it won't come back to the Planning Commission, but we do have every intention of ensuring that there is a landscape plan, a lighting plan, and any signage proposed to be reviewed by the Euclid Corridor Committee.
Good. I just wanted that to go on the record so everybody understood why, um, why it's not coming before us. Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, I'm handing over to Gavell. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're going to go back to the administrative approvals, and I think there are three. Um, before we take a look at those, I do have a question about them. Since there are these items that we've seen before, um, because two of them seem like kind of overlay or height. And I just wonder if staff could, could comment or about why these are in the administrative approvals? So not this one, but the next two.
This for the.
Yeah, just curious, I mean, if we had seen these before, because normally we would see additions to an urban overlay or the next one, which is also, um, are these items that are just minor changes that we've seen before? Cause normally when we're changing kind of the height, use or zoning, it's coming as a zoning matter.
Madam Chair, if I may, Michael Bosa, staff. Uh, yeah, these have been seen, in fact, what staff has been doing for the past year or so, probably more, is bringing all of these things to you as unnumbered ordinances. And so when I do finally get the ordinance with a number on it, I'd like to have a paper trail. And what I do is I put them under administrative approvals. We sign up, we stamp them and sign off on them because they've already been approved by you. Just that you may not see this since like for months after they've already been approved, and that's what's happening.
Okay, very helpful. I just did not want to not have proper procedure for a zoning matter. Um, so, so both of these we've seen and both just have numbers and that's why they're here.
Correct.
Okay. So there are three administrative approvals. Can I have a motion?
I move approval Downing.
I second McCray Scott.
Okay, motion and a second. Can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Um, Euclid Corridor, we have a couple of demolitions. Um, this is the east, or sorry, East Design Review District, sorry, 2022-03. This is the demolition of a one-story institutional building at 7804 Holton Avenue. Uh, is Kurt here or anyone else to present to these?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Kim Scott, City Planning, before you begin with these, I just want to clarify something. So the three demolitions that are within the east region area are here because when we reviewed and approved the Boron Freezer Facility at East 75th Street and Opportunity Corridor.
Yes.
These properties were not included in a site plan. So we were unaware that there were structures that needed to be demolished. So in the, um, in the interest of efficiency, I, I just want to say that these three properties are all a part of that, that project. And so you should be able to move through them pretty swiftly. Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. And we approved that project.
Yes.
Meeting, so, but I do need to swear in whoever is presenting the demolitions. So, uh, who is here to speak to them?
Well, I assume that's me. This is Kurt Uptegraff. I'm Director of Development for Weston, and we're the developer for this project.
Okay, so do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you can be pretty quick to show us where they are and I will take three separate motions.
Uh, so this is the project site. Uh, it's between E 75th and E 79th. RTA is to the south, which is towards the bottom of the image. And then to the, to the north is Opportunity Corridor. Orlando was the, baking is right north of Opportunity Corridor. Uh, this is one of the buildings. It's a church that, uh, this is owned by the City of Cleveland. Uh, Land Bank, as all these properties are. And these are just various pictures of the church building. It's built around 1960. Actually, there's, there's, you can see there's cracks in the, in the structure. There's water sitting on the floor. That's the inside there. So the roof is, is leaking severely, water damage from roofing leak, roof leaks. And I, I just put this on so you can see the new building. This may refresh your memory. Proposed building on the property.
Okay. Um, do you, uh, that was the first one. So let's take a motion about that before we see the second one.
I move approval Downing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second McCray Scott.
Motion and a second. Can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Epstein.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
A motion carries. Okay, the second one is, I believe, at 7614 Cromwell Avenue.
It's Cromwell Avenue. You can see the little orange dot where that is. That's the location. This building, uh, is obviously abandoned. There's broken windows, rotting porch trim. Let's see, then, uh, once you get to the interior, there's quite a bit of, of damage inside. Drywall removed, doors ripped off their hinges. Uh, more plaster damage. And again, this is the new building.
I move approval Downing.
The motion. Second McCray Scott, sorry about that. Um, and let's call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Epstein.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. And the third one is 2840 East 78th Street.
Right, so that's the orange dot on this map, RTA to the south, sort of the curved line to the north. You can kind of see Opportunity Corridor there, just, just to put it in perspective. Uh, this building is another abandoned building. There are broken windows in it. That you can see the porch is falling down inside, fair amount of water damage, plaster and paint becoming, falling off here. I don't know what, if somebody was planning to remodel or, uh, plaster was ripped off to get the copper or wiring or plumbing, but quite a bit of interior damage on this building.
Okay, um, do you have a motion for the third demolition?
I move approval Downing.
I second McCray Scott.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Epstein.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we have two projects in the flats, um, Design Review Cases, both for final approval. Um, and the first one is 2021-027. Uh, this is the Silver Hills at Thunderbird Bird, new construction. Uh, this is for final approval. Um, we saw this on December 3rd and granted schematic design approval. So, um, who's here to speak to this? I need everybody from the team or the architects or the developers who are going to speak.
Lily, Lily, and before we begin, I just wanted to let you know that we, uh, we actually have, there's one slide that's before their presentation, just so that they're aware too, that puts both projects together. We wanted to make sure that you understood how the buildings related to one another. So we did put an image in there showing the both, um, both projects since they're directly across the street from one another.
Okay, so let me swear them in and then we'll have you guys show that first. Uh, I also believe that the councilman is here, so I'll ask him if he would like to speak before or at the end as well. So first, let me swear in this team here from Silver Hills.
Yeah, but Gary O'Grady, Dimmit Architects.
Okay. Summer with Dimmit Architects.
Uh, is there anyone here from the developer? Um, Gary, is there anyone here from the, the development team or just you?
Doesn't look like it. It just looks like it's Matt, Matt Summer and myself from Dimmit. I don't see, Seth Henderson is developer. I don't, I don't see him on the, uh, I don't see him on the list here.
Okay.
Uh, do you swear? Brian from Landscape as well.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Sorry, Brian, Brian Yellen Rock with Neppen Associates is here.
Okay, okay. Do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Okay. Um, so how about this? Well, let me just ask real quick, Councilman McCormick, if you'd like to wait and speak at the end or if you'd like to say anything before we begin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to wait till the end.
Okay. Um, all right, so Marco, go ahead and show us the context and then we'll jump in.
All right, Maurice, you, you need to go back one slide. Okay, no, not that one. It was just, it was just one slide back. I think you went back a little bit further. Okay, maybe it's the next slide. Okay, there we go. Okay, so, yeah, this is, this is just showing both projects on the same slide. And one of the things that we noticed as we were looking at it, and I think also was mentioned in their design review meeting yesterday, was that just looking at how they relate to each other and connect in the green space that is public space, just one of the things that we noted was that the access from across the street was not there. And so, one of the things that we would probably want to look into is how to make that connection. I think right now, we're doing a study on the peninsula and looking at connections, green space connections throughout the area. And so, those are one of the things that we would like for them to consider is how those two connect, can connect and connect at the green space. So, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. It's very useful and I appreciate you taking the time to put these together in the same context. I also wish there was a little more context, I guess, below to see on the other side of the rail too, because I think long-term, the rail is not very heavily used. So, so we can talk about that later. Okay, to the applicants, please go ahead.
Okay, maybe can we go to the next, next slide, please? Gary? Okay, so this is a project, as you mentioned, you'd seen before for schematic in December. We got approval from Design Review yesterday, final approval, and so we made some adjustments per comments. We've been working on this for a while. There's been a lot of meetings with different neighborhood groups. And we had, had, had some meetings with Jack Malowski and the, and the team just to, to try to get this to where it needs to be. So, next slide. This is just some background about Silver Hills. They're a local, local company in conjunction with another company in Columbus. We can maybe just skip over this next one. This is the context which I, we presented last time, so I think everyone's familiar. I won't spend a lot of time on this unless there's questions. Next slide. Again, more context. Next slide. This is the, this is the, this is the site plan that we're asking for final approval today. You can kind of see, as you mentioned, Lilian, there's the railway to the, to the, to the north and I think, I believe, Great Lakes is providing, proposing a development to the south. Next slide. This is just some, some background in terms of the topography. There's a lot of topography on the site, which, this is just to sort of give you an idea. You can kind of see that, you know, some, some of the topography we're dealing with. Next slide. Again, some topography and you can kind of, kind of see, this is such some of the civil, just to kind of give you a sense where we are in the development of the project. Next slide. This is the floor plan, which is, there's no major changes really from the last time we presented. As, as we get into the elevations, I'll, we'll, and, and some of the plan blowups, we can go over some changes. One thing we did do is we, at the bottom here where the garage is, we, that faces now about two feet back or so from the main facade. That was a comment that was made to kind of break up that facade along Carter Road. Next slide. Typical floor plan. Next slide. This is the typical floor plan. See the various units. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, these are the final elevations. I think one of the things that you've seen since the last time we brought it here is we, we took off, there were some gabled peaks that were on, on the, on the, on the parapets, and we kind of simplified the facade to make it in sort of distinct building elements as you, as you, as you go along the building. And we've added, added the two white squares over the entry to kind of articulate that. Next slide. These are blowups of the elevations. You can see the, you can see the materials we're proposing. There's, maybe going from left to right. There's, there's brick, stucco board. The, the white here is stucco board. The, the gray is siding. There's more siding. And then this is the concrete garage. Next slide. Designer view, the last time we presented, asked us, these are blowups of the cordises on either element of the building. You can see to the left is the cornice treatment at the brick facade, and to the right is the cornice treatment at, at the areas of the building where we have the cement board cladding. Next slide. This is showing, this is a comment made at Designer View as well. There's cast stone around the base of the building where we have siding and cement board, and this just shows the profiles of the cast stone at those various areas. You can see where there's brick, there is no cast stone, but we needed the, the cast stone for areas where the, where the material, the cladding material is not suitable to come directly in contact with the ground. Again, this is just a blowup of the elevation on the, on the West River Front. Next slide. Again, just, just going around the building with these enlarged elevations. Next slide. Again, or just more of the elevations. I believe this might be the last one for the, for the, for the large building. Next slide. This is the, the lower building to the south, and you can see there's, there's tuck under parking facing Carter, but it, but that, but that parking is essentially screened by the retaining wall. You'll, you'll see that in rendering as we advance the slides. Next slide. Again, you can kind of see that this is, this is the entry level. You can see the paving on the lower right-hand corner. That's the, that's the access off Carter. Next slide. Again, a typical floor plan of the, of the south building. Next slide. So, this is, this, this is the elevation of the, of the, of the south building. You can kind of see there was, we made some adjustments on the columns at the tuck under parking area, sort of aligned with the windows a little better. We cleaned that up. That was, I believe, maybe the, the most significant change from the last time we showed the building. Next slide. Again, these are just some, some blowup elevations of the south building, and the palette of materials is consistent with matching the building to the north. Next slide. And so, this is the, looking to this, to the southwest from, from Carter Road, you can see the railroad bridge to the north. So, that's, that's the view sort of, sort of from Rudock's parking lot, sort of. Next slide. Again, this is the view, view from the river. Next slide. And this is, this is the view from Carter. You can kind of see here the green space between the two buildings that were connecting with the river. And we have, we have landscape slides following my presentation that Brian's going to talk about, to talk about how that works with the streetscape. And, and you can kind of see as the grade goes up to the left, it sort of shields that tuck under parking for the, for the smaller building to the south. Next slide. And this is just a, a blowup and a little more detailed view of the materials that we're proposing. Windows are pello vinyl windows. Looking at a pellet two fifty series. Cement board, panel and lap siding, brick. They're stone-based. Third storefront and metal railing color. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Brian at this point to, he can speak about the landscape plan.
Sounds good. Thank you, Gary. So, this slide is showing the tree selections for the site. We did meet with Urban Forestry and kind of ran through some of the tree selections and, and arrived at what you see here. There's a variety of upright trees for narrow spaces and some broad trees, mostly, mostly native selections. And in this case, next slide. And so, there is some, a couple of connections to the Riverwalk. The one to the left is a corridor that goes in between the buildings that connects to Carter Road. And then the one to the right is a, a courtyard area where the residents have access to the Riverwalk. We don't know the exact timing on the Riverwalk. So, you'll see some dash lines that show future connections to that Riverwalk and some benches to act as a, to terminate that walk temporarily. So, it looks like it's a intentional, in, in this case. Next slide. So, the Carter Road Streetscape, we're, this is showing some, the variety of plantings, the trees that are, are going into this space. There has been discussions in design review on, on taking another look at the width of the sidewalk. Right now, it's shown at eight feet. And there's been a request to look at potentially making that twelve feet. So, that will be studied in the future. And there's a lot of, like, there's a lot of scenarios that need to be looked like, looked at. When that does get widened, we have some, some power lines that we need to contend with. And the trees that they're, that where they're located now work well with that. So, widening the sidewalk will, will affect that. So, just something to be studied, and that would affect the furnishings along the, along that streetscape as well, the, the benches and bike racks. Next slide. So, this is a little more detailed on that, on that streetscape. And so, what we're proposing to do is use some of the, the large blocks that are on the site currently and placing them at the entrance to help emphasize the entrance and, 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 and also provide some additional alternate seating in those spaces. And you'll see, get an idea of what the plant materials that are selected for, for that Carter Road Streetscape. Next slide. This is showing the entrance to, to the, to both buildings. To the left is vehicular entrance, and we're going to emphasize that with some colored concrete and some alternate scoring patterns to the pavement. And to the right is the entrance to, to the residential building. And, and that would be colored concrete with textured mats, textured mats and, and border stamps and color selected to match the side of the building. Next slide. And this shows the photometrics and the lighting. We have a variety of lighting for, one is the vehicular lighting. The other is a pedestrian scale lighting. And then the third is, is bollards to, to light some paths. And, and this shows kind of like the different colors and, and symbols to show where those, those will be located. Next slide. This shows the interior pool courtyard. This is just for the residents. It's not open to the Kioga River. We'll have a pool amenities and well landscaped and, and a definite amenity to, to the residence of this, of this building. Next slide. This is the second courtyard, which is to the, to the, further to the south. This one is what we saw earlier that has the connections to the Riverwalk. It is open to, to the Kioga River, and we're proposing some residential gathering areas and some seating where, where residents can enjoy watching boats go by and on a nice day. Next slide. This just, it gives you a flavor of the furnishings and colors that would be, be within that interior courtyard. Next slide. And these are just more detailed plans of what we, we saw previously. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And, and again, just, these are the detailed landscape plans, not, not colored. And they're, they're being further developed, but gives a, gives a flavor of the, the amount of plantings that would be on the site. Intensity and some of the details that, that would be going in there as well. Next slide. We did have photometrics run for the lighting to kind of give an idea of what the, what the intensity of lighting would be on, on the site. Next slide. And just some, some enlargements of, of those photometrics. Next slide. Next slide. That's, that's, that's what I had. Gary, I don't know if you, you had anything else to, to add to that?
I don't think so. I think maybe we'll just open it up for, for questions or comments.
Thank you. I'm mute, Lilian.
I was saying, any questions or comments? I have a couple, but I'll, I'll hold off on mine.
Yeah, I, I this is a selfish, kind of selfish one, but it's a global point. I have an electric car. I was just in the garage at the Cleveland Clinic. It had three thousand spaces. They only, they only had two charging stations. Having said that, I haven't heard anybody talk about the different modes of, of how people travel, commute, whether it's ride sharing or, or bicycles or, or, you know, trying to accommodate how we, how we move through our environment. How, have you guys addressed that? Someone opine on that, please?
Well, maybe, this is Gary. I can maybe, I, you know, honestly, we haven't gotten to the level of detail, you know, to decide how many electric cars charging, are charging stations that we're going to have in the garage. But just the market, the market demands it. And it's always just a question of, of how many. I'm, I'm sure there'll be some, but we just have to kind of decide how many there will be. And, you know, I think there's, in terms of the bike path, that's something that, that, as Brian mentioned earlier, that has to be studied. I think, you know, whether it goes here or across the street or, you know, however, however that works. And you know, I don't, I don't believe there's any RTA stops along this, along the road here. We do, we did try to make it, as, as Brian pointed out in his presentation, as many connections to the river as we could. And maybe there's an opportunity also when the, I think at some point that, that the railway spur may be vacated, and that'd be another, another possible connection.
And Gary, just, it, it is typical for the developer. We, they do put electric parking in all their garages. Like Gary said, it'd just be quantity. They also do provide in the garage enclosed bike parking areas for residents, as well as the bike racks outside for short-term visitor parking or locking up of bikes and whatnot, especially with the access to the, to the riverfront trail here would also have bike racks along there.
Thank you. Um, if you could go back to the site plan that, um. Marka showed of the two projects together. I have a few kind of global questions and, and I'm going to recognize that some of this. Is, is not necessarily in exactly any projects per view, but just kind of huge opportunities that I think that. We need to be thought through a little bit. So first is, um, and this may be to the administration. The idea that the river walk is going to be built by others. Who are others? I guess is the question. I'm, I'm thankful that you guys are leaving that land. You know, I'm a huge proponent of the idea that eventually we'll have a connected boardwalk system in the flats. So you guys are obviously doing this voluntarily, which I commend, but my question is, have you had a conversation? And is there a timeline and who are others?
Right. Well, I guess just, uh, just a point of clarification. Um, our developer does not own that, that boardwalk land. It's just, you know, that it's a separate piece of property. So we, we, you know, are anticipating, I think everyone's anticipating that a boardwalk will be there, but, um.
Who owns the land? Who owns that land?
That, that land is in, currently in the hands of the base developer for the entire Thunderbird master plan.
Okay. And it, or, or have there been any discussions with the city about the base developer developing that? Or is it like, have, have there been conversations about how the, that gets done over time?
Madam Chair, uh, Jim Haviland has his hand raised as well as Councilman McCormick. I'm not sure if either of them can answer that question.
Okay. Um, Councilman, you want to go first?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I had a, my hand raised for general comments. I don't know the timeline on the boardwalk.
Okay. Um, uh, so that's just my first question, and I think this is just a bigger question about, um, about. You know, just sort of kind of more proactively thinking about, um, you know, how this gets done over time. I'm really glad it's being set aside by the base developer and, and I also applaud you, this development, um, actually. Uh, using structured parking and, um, and actually, um, you know, really not having a sea of parking. So I just want to say that as well.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Matt Moss says he can speak to that issue about the, uh, what you've been discussing.
Okay. Uh, and then one second, my last, um, comment before, uh, Matt goes is that. I, having seen these together, um, I think, and my question to Gary to you is. Now that you know that these two things are together from a kind of planning point of view, seems like the kind of alignment or misalignment of the walkways between the two projects. You know, uh, could possibly be much more ceremonial and, um, and create a kind of an axis down here. Um, that isn't quite there yet. And so I wonder if you've had any discussions with the prod, the other project? And if there's still room to, to really think about, um, this kind of new vista and public space between these two projects. Um, because right now it's, it's, it's not only not quite there for me, seems like a huge missed opportunity. And, um, and would require collaboration between the two developers.
Um, well, I, I, I don't believe, you know, in the development of this, we've had, uh, a conversation with the, uh, with the folks across the street. Is that when we started this and we started developing, I think, uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't really, we'd heard the project was on hold or we, I mean, we just didn't know the status. So, so we developed this and, um, and really as, uh, far, you know, as, as far as collaborating, I'd have to really defer to our owner. But I, I will say this, you know, our, we did do many, many options on the site to, to look at it and it's, uh, it's a constrained site. So it's a, you know, it, it, it might, it might be tough to, to make any radical changes. But I, again, I, we haven't thought about it and I would defer to our developer.
Okay. Um, I'm not talking about anything radical. I'm talking about joint planning. So the idea that, that, the, the projects can move forward. But the, the joint landscaping, planning could still continue and not have final approval is where I'm heading. So anyway, we'll get to that later. Um, first, uh, if it's okay, um, I'm gonna ask the councilman to go first. And then we'll go back to Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate, um, you having me on this morning. So, um, what, just a couple of thoughts on the project itself. Uh, first of all, support the project overall. I think it's a really important addition to the peninsula as we kind of continue to move the, um. Scranton Peninsula development forward. Uh, give me one second, Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
Uh, Madam Chair, just a reminder, we also have Jim Haviland as well with the.
Well, we'll get to Oliver. We'll give everyone time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry about that. So, um, again, supportive of the projects, um, overall absolutely important piece of kickstarting the Scranton Peninsula. Redevelopment, which is really, really exciting. Um, two thoughts, Madam Chair. Uh, first and foremost, um, to Mr. Fluker's comments, um, those aren't selfish and those aren't, um, uh, individual comments either. Those are critical. Um, how do these projects, uh, include the infrastructure, whether it be, um, electric vehicles, autonomous vehicles, um, right, you know, rideshare drop off. Cycling, all of those elements that are not pipe dreams. They are coming fast and furious. So I think as a city, we've got to be really thoughtful and ensuring that those are a part of these projects so that we don't look back in. Not ten years, but five years and really, um, kick ourselves. Uh, so I think that his comments are really important. And we should be digging into that as a city administration and council and beyond. Um, I also, August, drive an electric vehicle. Um, and so it, uh, we know that electric vehicle sales over the last year doubled. So, um, his comments, I just want to amplify and I think are really important. Uh, Madam Chair, also do want to echo your thoughts too, um, and really thinking about this as, um, a. Block those calls while I'm on these. Um, it's, there's a bit of a snowstorm, uh, so I'm getting, my phone is blowing up. So let me see if I can put this on. Do not disturb. All right. My apologies. Life of a council person. Um, anyways, uh, so. How these projects connect? How do they connect to the river? Um, you know, for folks, once these are built, um, the general public is not going to care. That they were separate developments or separate ownership. Uh, what's going to matter is the publicly facing connectivity, um, and accessibility, not just for the public, but also of course for the folks that live, um, in these buildings. So I think it's a matter of public planning, but it's a, also a matter of success for these projects. So I echo your comments, Madam, Madam Chair, about how do we. Really, and again, I don't think it needs to hold the projects up, but how do we work with staff to really coordinate the connectivity between these two projects? And, and within, in and around Carter Road. And I would expand that, Madam Chair, also to the other sites around the, these two projects as well. Again, for the long-term, short to mid, mid to long-term functionality of these sites, I think we've got to be thoughtful about that. Um, last thing, Madam Chair, I would say to you is, um, and I've expressed this to both of the development teams of these projects and as, as well of the city. I know that Matt Moss has been working hard to come up with some ideas, uh, from city planning, um, and, and not, this one I'm going to be, um, a li- a little clear on. Um, I think if we don't connect through Carter, these projects to the Centennial Trail, the Lakeland Trail, the tow path. Um, it's a complete failure on behalf of our city. Um, so I, I don't think that this is a nicety. I think we must have multimodal infrastructure on at least one side of these projects that connects you to the multimodal paths. Again, I, I think that that would just be a horrific blatant failure if we don't, um, make that a condition, quite frankly, Madam Chair. Um, I, I think it's, uh, so important, not only for the city, but for these projects. Um, as the NRP group can tell you themselves, um, but they work with the city over at the Edison. That is a vibrant trail that connects you down to Edgewater Park. It is so important for that project as well for the community and for the neighborhood. So I just, to me, Madam Chair, I think that should be a condition. Um, I don't, I'm not going to draw it on the screen here today, but we must, it cannot be a suggestion. We must have a multimodal connection between, um, the Centennial Trail, Lakeland Trail through Carter, through this site. Um, all the way over to the tow path and beyond. Um, again, if we don't plan and build that today, we are going to regret it immensely in the future. So again, Madam Chair, appreciate the opportunity to speak, support these projects, uh, great step forward for the, uh, Scranton Peninsula. Um, great added density and residential to the community. Um, but to your comments on the, the, the boardwalk, uh, connectivity. August comments on, uh, you know, the options for multimodal and all modal in these projects as well as the connectivity to the trails. I think are, those are things that we need to get our head around quickly. Um, because again, if we don't implement, if we don't include those in the planning efforts of these projects. I think long-term it's going to be a big problem. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and appreciate the investment in the city, in the city of Cleveland, uh, on behalf of these development teams.
Can I clarify something as we move forward before, in case you drop off? So are you suggesting that? We, let's say we do final approval, but we, um, do not include, let's say, the landscape site plan. Bike connections and have that portion come back with, let's say, the planning with the other projects as well as the connectivity, some suggestions about that. Is, is that what you're saying also, meaning we don't know exactly where or how, but we want that portion to continue to develop?
That's correct. So Madam Chair, what I don't want to do, understanding the market, understanding supply constraints, understanding place, price fluctuations. I don't want to hold these projects up. Um, but I, but it, it, you know, assume, you know, a lot, assuming that we're, you know, uh, good to issue permits to start construction and all of the other work. Um, I would, uh, suggest, uh, and again, I've, I've said this directly to both development teams, so this is not a, a surprise on them. Uh, I would suggest that we really, uh, hold the line on ensuring that there's connectivity, uh, and that there is, um, some sort of multimodal connection. Again, I don't see that, Madam Chair, as us asking for something just for the community. I think again, as you see in the Edison, it's both, it's community and it, it, it makes the project more attractive. So I don't see it as, you know, so yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense as long as we can give the green light, allow these folks to move forward, assuming that this panel wants to do that. But if that is the case, um, if this panel supports the projects, if we can give them the green light to move forward, but then insist that they work with our staff to make sure those connections are done well.
Okay, understood. Um, okay, so we have, uh, Matt and, um, uh, Jim Haviland. Uh, Matt, you want to go first and then Jim will have you go last there before we open it up?
Sure thing, Madam Chair. I can add some more information to your questions and comments as well as the councilmen's. We agree with what Councilman McCormick has expressed. Uh, staff have been working on, uh, assessing this area in terms of what those connections can and should be in the near term. And in the long term with regards to the boardwalk and river walk. Uh, there are certain phases of that project that have been, that are underway right now. For example, there was a parcel near the Columbus Road Bridge where the Lakeland Trail connects. From, uh, the tow path trail to Columbus Road. That is, uh, that parcel right now is, is a project under the city's capital projects office because of, uh, the hillside stability issues. And so as that project has evolved, uh, we have begun to assess what future connections that can provide. So I think staff are currently preparing those recommendations, not just for the property owners here, but, but also for the design review committee and the commission. And we'd be happy to return when that is ready. Uh, the committee yesterday did, uh, recommend that the final details of the landscaping, especially along Carter. Come back at a future date. Once we have figured out exactly what the preferred connections are, we are looking at Carter Road. We're looking at these connections right now. Uh, for what is the best way to connect Carter from the Lakeland Trail to the tow path trail that connects up by Scranton and the Carter Road Lift Bridge. And we'd be more than happy to present those alternative, those preferred alternatives to the commission and, uh, i- in, in partnership with both developers. Looking at the conditions right now, the, what, what our preferred connection path is, is on the Silver Hills side of, of this road. That's mainly due to the dynamics of the intersection at, uh, that where the Carter Road Lift Bridge connects to Carter, uh, Carter Road itself. And the, the widths of the street and the widths of the right of way that we have to work with. But we'd be more than happy to present recommendations at a subsequent planning commission meeting while the developer continues to work through their process of, of determining how to construct this project. As well as the zoning ordinance that has yet to be adopted that would also enable these projects to be built. So there are a lot of moving parts to this, but there is still time to present these recommendations. So everyone has a clear understanding of what the opportunities are, what the challenges are and how we can move forward on providing those connections.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Jim?
Morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'll be brief. So I wanted to address the, the question, uh, or the direction that there is coordination. I just wanted to confirm there is. There's constant communication with the city, with Flats Forward and the Vision for the Valley Coalition. On the boardwalk issue, we're in conversations with Geis and Thunderbird, obviously coordinating the Great Lakes Brewing Company, Silver Hills and, um, the BrewDog developments. Also in conversations with the Flats Industrial Railroad. Um, connections, as we talked about, are critical and that bridge to, uh, the Columbus Road Peninsula is also important. So Flats Industrial Railroad is amenable to talking about that, but they want to make sure they don't orphan that bridge by giving away land next to BrewDog and Silver Hills right now. But we are in discussions with the entirety of their, um, their right of way on Scranton Road Peninsula. And then, uh, lastly, uh, obviously we've been meeting with Silver Hills as an organization and Vision for the Valley, uh, Coalition and NRP. In a recent meeting with NRP, which you'll hear, um, from the presenters, there is, uh, a desire to coordinate with Silver Hills. So I think we have the ability, um, with everybody involved to address the concerns and, um, capture the opportunities on Scranton. So I just wanted to say that and then also Flats Forward is supportive of both of these projects. So hopefully that helps as well, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, and commission members, any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I, I share your concerns and the concerns expressed by the councilman. Um, this is a, a great opportunity that, uh. Is being worked on, but could be lost if not monitored. So I would like to make a motion to approve, but to, uh, request that. The plans for the multimodal connection paths, the landscaping plan and the transportation options, as well as all the comments, uh, and, uh. Requirements from design review, uh, be, uh, brought back to the commission.
Thank you. Um, so just to clarify before there's a second, uh, for the developer. So I think what we're saying is that, uh, you receive approval, uh, final approval on the buildings themselves. Um, so it allows you to move forward, but I think the, um, the landscape, which includes the site plan, um, and the trail connectivity. Um, is going to be required to come back and, and what we mean by that is that you don't have final approval on the landscape plan. And we'll ask that you work with the planning staff, Flats Forward and the developer across the street to coordinate. So that when you come back, we're going to have you come back with the project across the street in the city to show coordinated district, uh, open space plan. So, um, so just want to clarify, final approval on the buildings, but not on the site plan.
I, I would second that, Madam Chair. Um, I, I, I think what needs to happen here, someone needs to own the, the big picture. I think, you know, it's just like anything else. Uh, these developers have motivations and other things that get them to the table. And I don't think the overall objective of what we're talking here is that, unfortunately, right? So I, I don't know, Matt, how, um, you can help, help drive that. Obviously it's a planner. You have a good, great handle on that. So get your sketchpad out, brother. Thank you.
There are motion and a second.
Madam Chair, uh, discussion on that, if I may?
Yep.
Yeah, just, uh, to, uh, again, um, I'm, um, batting with my friend August this morning. So I, again, I agree completely and I would ask that the development teams, again, message loud and clear from the city of Cleveland is that we support your projects. We're excited about the, these projects. But please work with our planning staff. We get great planning staff, uh. We got great planning staff, Flats Forward and others to make sure we get these elements right. Thank you.
Yep.
And Madam Chair, I would say that the city needs to drive and own this.
Yep, okay. And bring everyone together quickly, so we're efficient and we don't hold them up too, so.
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. Can we take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Harston.
Yes.
Motion carries. I do want to thank you, Mark, for putting together that plan of the projects together. I think that was very helpful, because seeing these projects in isolation, you know, I think has been difficult for us. So I'm going to ask that you actually do an expanded version when you come back of that, that includes the brewery and the other projects that are on all four, or all three sides of it, to go ahead and do that same kind of collage of the development proposals that expands a little bit farther when you come back, because it's extremely useful to see even where those projects are in their thinking adjacent to each other. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next project across the street is the Peninsula New Construction. This is also for final approval. This is 2019-063, West Bank of Carter Road. And this is the NRP group. Anybody speaking on this team, if I can swear you in?
Sure, this is Scott Skinner. I'm here. We have Aaron Pocota, Tom Nestor with NRP, Mark Harris and Renato Goberti with BKV Architects, Tom Zarfis with Bangy Landscape and Dusty Keeney with Polaris Engineering here.
Okay, do you all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you very much. And you can go to the, the first slide here in our presentation, please. You know, first, I know we're on the last item on the agenda here, so I wanted to start by just saying thank you all for your time and your consideration here. You know, we are very happy and very excited to be back presenting this project to you again. We were last in Planning Commission, I think it was noted on that slide, in fall of 2019. And then we were in a final design review in April of 2020. Throughout this process, as was mentioned by Councilman McCormick and Jim at Flats Forward, we've been actively engaged with Flats Forward, with the councilmen, with Matt and with Metro Parks as well on our plans and appreciate their feedback. And their feedback's really been, become a part of the, of our plans here. So you can go to the, the next slide, please. So what you're seeing in front of you is our site plan placed in the larger initial marketing plans for Thunderbird. And the, the purpose of this is just to show you how our, our site would feel and, and would look as part of that larger master plan. I think you'll see that we put a lot of thought into, you know, how this project's going to interact with future development, development. And obviously, the whole conversation right before this, there's been a lot of activity since we were last here, opening a BrewDog. And I'm sure we'll talk a lot about connectivity and more about how it relates to the, the site across the street. But we believe the project as presented last year, or two years ago, and as initially planned, still interacts really well with any future development opportunities. So you can go to the, the next slide, please. And the next slide, I'll spend just 10 seconds here. Obviously, the site is right downtown, but at the apex of Ohio City and Tremont as well. Second.
Question before you go back to that master plan or the aerial, just so you don't have to come back. I have a technical question, because this is very important. First time I've seen that kind of rendering like that, maybe I missed it last time. But can you clarify, go back one more? To the rendering?
I think it's the slide, slide one.
So there's a question, I think I asked the councilman also. This long range master plan shows the rail becoming a greenway park system. And I know that is the long range vision, but I'd like you to address then in your project, as you present, the fact that you guys have treated it as a rail, sort of turning your back on it. And so this, to me, the long range vision is the first I've seen that that long, that, that curve thing becomes actually an asset, a greenway. And so I worry about the long range vision not sort of matching up with what you're proposing. So I just wanted to point it out so that you can address it when you get there, because this is the preferred long-term state of a kind of greenway system there that cuts through the entire flats, which reorients a lot. So please address that when you get there.
No, I appreciate you pointing that out and, and we will address that. So you can go forward to a couple of slides to where we were. So again, really quick, just site conditions, you know, with last conversation, we all know where this site is. Our property is 7.44 acres and, and Madam Chair, to, to your point, we have oriented it around the railroad. We obviously have no control over the railroad and, and when it turns into a trail, we're eager to see that as well. But I think what you'll show on the next slide here is that with the railroad and with the rest of the future development of the Scranton Peninsula, we have put a lot of thought into how our site connects and connectivity in general, both in the immediate term, you know, before this railway could, could turn into a green space, and in the long term, looking at the development of, of the greatest, of the greater peninsula and really every side of our site. And you can see that the, the pink and purple dots here connects. And we've, you know, we talked about this a lot in the last presentation, but what we've tried to do here is lay out a grid. And, and while the back of the site is facing what could be a future greenway, we do feel like the, the connectivity through the site, because there will be townhomes, the, the parking garage you'll see in a little bit here, will have some, some landscaping and some art on there as well. It should feel like a street and, and connect to this, connect to the trail in a way that feels intentional. I mean, obviously, one of the things we love about the site is it's proximally to the trail network. I, I live about a mile and a half from here. I spend a lot of time jockeying on the tow path. So the, the connectivity here and the opportunity here is what really attracted us to the site initially and why, and why we're still attracted to it. And you can see there pedestrian and bike access points around the site and, and again, provide an opportunity to connect to the other side of the peninsula in the future with Metro Parks' greater tow path plans. And like I mentioned earlier, we have been working with and talking to Metro Parks to, to make sure that future connectivity is, is an option. The slide also highlights one of the conditions that this body had at schematic review last time we were here, which was to further study the, the bike path. And to the councilman's points earlier, you know, very happy to participate in all those conversations, along Carter Road and going through our site. But, you know, and we also have internal bike storage on our site, as well as a number of, a number of bike racks. So we very much envision a lot of people enjoying the site via foot and, and via bike. And what we, what we're doing here and what we're trying to do here is really set the table for future development, both the, the potential greenway on the railroad now going through, as well as anything that could be on the opposite side of that greenway. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is our site plan. There are 316 total units, 31, 2 and 3 bedroom apartments and 15 townhomes, all rentals. We have a total of 458 parking spaces or 1.45 spaces per unit. That includes initially 12 charging spaces, but we have the capacity to, to double that in the future. And this, what you see here is a combination of surface parking, as well as a two-story parking garage on site. And then there's also an area that will be designated for ride share pickup. You know, even though we're very pedestrian and bike friendly and we're thinking about that and, and how we're planning this, given the fact that there is no street parking on the peninsula, we do feel that this is the appropriate, appropriate number of parking spaces based on our project at the Edison Accordance Square and, and what the parking situation is there. You know, like I just mentioned, we will have bike wraps and bike racks and internal bike storage. It's in building B, which is the building on the left here. You can see the townhomes flank the parking garage. So if you're coming down Carter Road, the garage itself will not actually be visible. And then there are additional townhomes along Carter that sort of step the site down to a, to a lower level where, where BrewDog is. And then the two main buildings are each five stories with resident amenities on the first floor and, and additional amenities in the courtyards of each building. And then we've located our transformers in the back, in back of house and we have services coming off that back street as well. And then we're building a road that will bisect our site and the Great Lakes land to the right of this image. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of our project. And like I mentioned before, you can see how the, the townhomes conceal the parking garage from the street level. And we have strategically located our, our fitness center and leasing space, both spaces. And you'll see this in a little bit more detail on a future slide. Both the spaces are really highly active and, and highly used during the day. And, and we think those are great ways to activate the corners of each building. And there'll be significant glazing there, so it'll, it'll feel very much like a first floor commercial space. We're also using townhomes to act as a visual anchor for what we're calling a, a one, which is the pathway between our two main buildings. One Earth means living street, I believe. And, and the idea of putting this here is that it can be used for parking when necessary, but it will be landscaped to look and feel different than a standard road. So it's easily closed off for, easily closed to vehicular access, excuse me, for events, food trucks and, and other activities. And that was a change that was made directly from feedback we received, both from you all on this body as well as a design review very early on. Renato or Tom, I'm not sure if you guys have anything to add here?
Sure, I think you kind of touched on some of the key points, the idea of actually street activation by, by using the active use or drop-off sequence right here. It's actually in the right-hand side, that would be our main entry pointed to the project, right? And then we have leasing and lobby spaces creating that active zone on this corner, this node. And then the next building, which is on the upper left, we have our fitness center space. Again, emphasizing that active connection. And as Scott mentioned, we do have aligned our townhouses to kind of create a terminus to this plaza space that we're creating this, that, that Scott also referred to as the one, which is actually a better term, than just a plaza space. And, and we are additionally to kind of complete the Carter Road activity, where we introduced those, here's the townhouses near the, the rail line. Next slide.
So Renato, again, I can, I can start on this real quick and let you dive in. So again, what you're seeing is the fitness center on your right. And we're highlighting this slide because it really shows how we're trying to consider how pedestrians walking down Carter Road will interact with the site. We're obviously meeting streetscaping requirements with trees and lighting here. And there are green spaces for people to sit and enjoy a nice day. And additionally, this image is also an example of how we're trying to encourage the, the public to interact with our site. The shipping container is one concept and one example, but this is really just a, an idea of how we can encourage folks to interact with our site as they're walking down Carter Road to BrewDog or to hopefully a new trail network. Sorry, Renato, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. It's meant to be more of a conversation anyways. The, you can see what we're trying to do here is we're dealing, when dealing with the actual topography of the site, where we can connect to and create that activity zones on, along Carter Road. We are trying, we are trying to do that, but we can't. As you can see, we're here, if you look at the flash, fish floor line, it says significantly higher, we're trying to actually use landscape and as an element to create visual interest. And then also, the buildings right now are oriented, the courtyard's facing Carter Road to give this porosity to the project, give you a visual connection in what actually is private space beyond. But in this case, we have a, a public, a public zone in front of that private courtyard that actually terraces up to the first floor line.
I think we can go to the next slide here, please.
And then this is the, the other building further to the south, where we're actually, again, visually connecting our courtyard space to the street. There is, there are actual horse connections you can see through the staircase that lead you to the main lobby and then eventually on to the actual pool deck, which is secure. The other thing that we've done here is the introduction of walk-up units that actually are connected to the street. So you can actually go into your residential unit directly from Carter Road by taking that staircase without having to go inside of the building. And we were able to do that. We tried to do that as often as we could, given the topography, sometimes it just wasn't possible. Next. Then looking at the street that's fronting the brewery. So this is the connection that we're proposing and creating an actual active street light scape by actually having flanking of that garage structure with these townhouses. And then again, active uses along the, the, the main building space. So you've seen an actual connection, one of the walk-up units here to connect to this particular internal street that we're creating on the site. Next slide, please.
Renato, I think I can speak to this one real quick.
Sure.
But Project's also going to have a Sky Lounge, real name TBD, that will have just terrific views of, of downtown, what you see right in front of you. A lot of the units on the sort of back part of the site will also be able to see Progressive Field. And you can't really tell in this picture, but the Sky Lounge wraps around the corner of that building. So from there and from really all of our units on the third, fourth and fifth floors, you'll have great views of the river you'll be able to see from up there with the great change that we have, the foundry right behind it, then, you know, the Irish, Irish Town Ban Future Park behind that as well.
Right. And this is a, this view in particular, you can see the actual row of townhouses at the end of development. And that's the roof deck, which would be more or less the fourth floor of that particular building. And you can still see the, the city skyline. So the development that's happening across the street from us will not, will not actually block this particular view. So this is really kind of an asset. That's where the topography becomes really advantageous to our design efforts here. Next slide, please. So a view of the one earth here and the, the space between the two buildings, you can really see how much the topography really affects the design of the site. We are essentially a full story on the building on the left in comparison to the building on the right and locating the, and the one between creating that plaza scape and then creating this connection from Carter Road onto the one of itself. And then you can see the townhouses beyond, creating that terminus of this access that we're creating in the project.
And I'll just add, there are, you can't really see it with the trees, but there are pedestrian paths that connect through the one earth into that grid that we'd mentioned as well.
Next slide, please. And then this was a study that we did. There was a question earlier on as we're presenting this, going through the DRC process, on whether or not we wanted to continue the, the access of the one earth, the nerf through the site all the way to the, the railroad line. And so this is just showing the two options, but one of which has, I'm sorry, I'm actually looking at the wrong side of that. This is actually a view of the, of the street that we're creating, fronting the Great Lakes Brewery building. So I got a little turned around. Oh, yes, and but again, looking at what will happen when you actually create that axle connection through the one earth and not having that active use of the townhouse that's facing this particular street that we're creating that's fronting the Great Lakes Brewery. So the image on the upper left shows you the role of townhouses in alignment with the elevator building. And then what will happen for it to actually remove those townhouses to create the access on the one, one side? Next slide, please.
And just to sort of clarify here, Madam Chair, I believe this was a, a suggestion that you had. You asked us to sort of study what it would look like to have the one of extend all the way through. And this is just us showing that we, we did take a really hard look at this. And I'll let Renato go through the rest of the, the sort of views and pros and cons.
So here's a closer view of that condition. So the street that we're creating in line with the townhouses, the engine at the left, and then the image on the lower left showing what will happen if you don't have the row of townhouses in this particular connection right there. So you're just seeing the exposed parking garage at that point. Next slide, please. Again, another view of the same, illustrated in the same point, right? So here, you see that this condition, with the two townhouses facing each other to create that access, right? But then the lack of that activity.
And then we're not.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You're breaking up, you're breaking up a little bit, but just wanted to.
Change my mind. Give me a second, Scott. I want you to take it away. Sometimes my, my connection's a little odd.
Sure. So the one thing to highlight on this, the aerial, the aerial view of this is this is actually a view, would be basically either right. would be basically either right from the bridge or from the Centennial Link Trail, sort of right when you, right when you get on it from where Sokolaskis is or where the Cleveland sign and tree on it. So just taking a look at again, what, what it would look like to move those townhomes the other side of the site and what it would do to the view externally as well.
Scott, can you hear me better now?
Great.
Thank you. Sometimes I have to manually change my microphone to, from the computer to my camera. So yes, I think Scott explained this pretty well. Why don't we move on to the next slide? And then the, the view from kind of the other end showing the townhouses versus the exposed parking structure. Next slide. And then just a view of the general aesthetic of the townhouses and the view, the city views from the townhouses themselves in this case.
So, so what you can see here is this is again, the bottom photo is if the townhouses were moved to the other side of the parking garage. And the difference, the, looking at this from our future residents' perspective, folks who live in those townhouses in the proposed site plan, the views they would have of the city here versus if on the bottom part of the plan, they'd really just be looking into their neighbors' windows from, from their townhomes.
Right. Next slide, please. And then showing the view from kind of that corner of the site, seeing what you would see, what your view is to the back of the townhouses on the lower left and then to the front of the townhouses in the upper left. Next. And then that, what I mentioned earlier about that axial connection versus not having the axial connection with the townhouses kind of creating a determinus along the one earth, the one earth. Next. And now we're looking at the site plan in general. So we can see we have four buildings on the site, really seven if you consider the parking garage and two flanking townhouse buildings as separate buildings. And your general arrangement, you can see that the townhouses really are on axis right now. This is our preferred scheme, right, with the, with the one earth. And then the two elevator buildings, really kind of fraternal twins. They have, the typical floors are essentially identical. The differences really happen at the ground plane and the fifth floor condition for, for the buildings. What you're seeing here in blue are the residential units at grade. And what you're seeing in yellow are the amenity and active zones of the project. So looking at those, the fitness center that we saw, that you saw in the earlier rendering as well as the lobby leasing spaces that you see on the upper, I'm sorry, the building to the, to the right. And then we also have some amenity spaces and like bike storage and mailrooms and towards the actual service street, which is the building that runs along the site, separating the parking garage from the two elevator buildings. That's how we really see that is more of a service portion of the, of the site with parking around it as well. Next slide, please.
And this next slide should be the landscape plan, I believe. So Tom, I think you're on, if you could speak to that.
Yes, I will. As you recall from about the third slide, this is about as highly a disturbed site as you can find. We reviewed this site with the city forester and there's really was no vegetation on this site that, that we could or would even want to try to save. So we're, we're starting fresh. This plant has about approximately 150 new deciduous trees. And I haven't counted up the rest of the, the plant material that we're using. It's quite a lot. And as you also have noted, this site might look sort of flat in an aerial perspective, but it's far from it. It's got a lot of elevation change. And that has some, had some impact on how we did the planting. Also on the Carter Road right of way, I think you probably all know this as well. It's a very narrow right of way. It's only two eleven foot lanes. And I think we had four feet of right of way on our side. So we're actually giving the city an easement to create enough sidewalk and get a streetscape there, which will be an enormous improvement over what's there right now. So if we go to the next slide, we can talk about some of the individual spaces. Along that Carter Road streetscape, these are examples of the kinds of situations we have. You can see we have some, some step up to the, to the buildings. And some of those areas are not areas you could use turf on and mow. So we've got a good bit of our, our planting there that includes ornamental grasses, some, try to get some evergreens in there, some juniper, arborvitae, hydrangea, holly. But those are typical conditions. You can go to the next slide. Again, building two, how we step up to that building. And also a section through the one earth. And we'll show you those two spaces in more detail in the next slide. Building two courtyard, a really highly developed, lots of amenities. We have catenary lighting. We have outdoor, we have picnic tables. We have activities. There's a lawn for lawn bowling. There's ping pong tables, fire pits. We have a place toward the bottom there that where you could sit and show movies in the evening. So there's a lot of amenities in this space. Planting wise, some flowering trees and some planters. And then along the edge of this space, there are residential units that face onto this. They all have patios and there are some low hedges that screen them, give them a little bit of privacy from, from the, from what activities in the courtyard. This is a private space. Obviously, it's not intended for the public to access this space. And you can get a good idea of the kind of views from the space and the kind of furniture. Next slide. This is the one earth. Another name for that is the home zone, depending on what country you're in. The idea here is it functions as a parking lot, but it can also kick the cars out. And you have a really very attractive space for a party, a market, whatever you want to do. And as some of you know, I've been on Cleveland's Downtown Design Review Committee for a long time. And one of my complaints has been with these kinds of developments, how poorly they treat the parking areas. I mean, most of them are really, I think, are not well done at all. I think this is an example, the kind of things that can be done with a parking lot and becomes a lot more than a parking lot. And obviously, individual residential units face on this. We've tried not to make this a super maintenance intensive place, but we have done some pretty interesting plantings at entrance points. And each of these units has a, has a very attractive front yard, small as it is. And you can see examples of some of the furnishings and lighting to the right. Next slide. And the second courtyard is where the pool is. And I'm not the pool designer, but I can tell you there's a leisure pool there and the, the regular pool and all the appropriate furnishings. We also have real islands here as well, as was occurred in the other courtyard. Some outdoor activities, fire pit, lots of seating. And you can get a pretty good feel for it in the two perspectives to the next slide. So I think the developer here is doing a really good job of providing amenities for the residents. Thank you.
Renato, I'll turn it back to you here.
Sure. Thank you. Looking at the building elevations, we're looking at a contemporary aesthetic for the entire development. Materials will be a combination of macery and fiberglass panel and fiberglass siding in different colors to kind of help break the mass of the building. Next slide, please. We don't need to dwell on these too long. And then again, just looking at different, the different elevations, how they transition from one side to the next in terms of palette changes. Next slide, please. And then the opportunities for signage, we're studying, this is this, I guess, the northernmost building, where you have some significant visibility from downtown Cleveland. You, so we're studying the potential for actually having a monumental sign element that's attached to the roof in that particular corner of the, of the project. Next slide.
We'd obviously come back to this body for approval.
Right. And then, you know, looking at the bottom one is the actual street elevation, seeing the, some potential, again, potential signage for the project along Carter Road and then the active zone for the fitness center along that portion of this particular building. You know, what you're seeing up in the, if you look at the bottom elevation on the upper left of that, that is our, our Sky Lounge that has, provides a view of the city of Cleveland. Next slide, please. And then again, looking at the townhouse elevations, as I mentioned earlier, studying macery, fiberglass cement. The material palette would be similar for both the townhouses as well as the, as the elevator building. So macery, fiberglass cement board, fiberglass siding. Next. And then this, these are the, the slightly smaller townhouses. They're a little wider, less, these are the ones that are flanking the parking structure. Again, same material, similar material palette. Next. And then the, it's twin brother to the north of the, of the site. Same elevation, just varying the colors a little bit. Next slide, please. And then a close-up of the actual sides of those particular building, two buildings that are flanking the parking structure. Next slide, please. Actually, I'll go back to that. We did, we, those corners, the townhouses were actually designed as a true cornered building. So they actually have not just facade that's facing the street under quotes, and but it actually wraps the corner as a, as a unique townhouse design that has two real faces to the, to it. Now, next slide, please. And then sections. Not have to dwell on this too much. You can see the topography going down to the Cuyahoga River. Next slide. And then this is where we kind of already discussed the material palette to a certain extent. So we don't really have to dwell on this too much, but this is the entry corner of the building, drop off sequence and lobby leasing on the first floor and giving you a view of the streetscape along Carter Road. Next. And then close up of the actual townhouses themselves. Next slide, please. And then the actual material selections that we presented for the DRC. Next. And we were looking at varying the color palette a little bit, but again, it's the same material palette. Next slide, please. And then a townhouse material palace as well. Next. Next. We really do, they do a lot of these interior palace, don't we? And then the photometric plan for the site. I think that's the last slide. Nope, I guess not. No, we, just going through the building plans, I think we've already kind of touched on a lot of these items. This is the ground level of the two buildings. You can see the comparison between the two. That's the variation really. And then you start seeing how much similar, more similar they get as they move up the building. Next. I think we want to turn it over to landscape again. No?
We can probably just go to the next slide here, Renato.
Yeah. Next slide, please.
Renato, I think a lot of this is just getting into kind of the required detailed documents. So if we want to touch on any of that, or if the board would like to, we can. Otherwise, we can probably open it up to comment at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, commission members, and also if you're, you'd like to speak, you could raise, and you're not a commission member, you can raise your hand as well.
Madam, Madam Chair, we have Matt Moss with his hand raised.
Okay. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly comment and say that I think staff have just some slight concerns and want to further understand the bio retention areas in the parking lot. I think we could work on this administratively if that's all right with the commission, but we just want to make sure that they're large enough and suitable, given the overall site. Other than that, that's the only concern we'd like to express.
Okay, thank you. Commission members? Any questions or comments? I think you know that we'll likely make a similar motion that, that we did to the project before you, that, to allow you to continue to move forward because it is a great project. We will kind of move forward with the design, but will likely not give final approval on, let's say, the landscaping, and not necessarily the landscaping materials, but the connectivity and so the landscape plan. So that you can explore the connections to the site below and then to the river the whole way. And I think it is in the best interest of both projects to think that through long-term. My opinion on a day-to-day basis, that while the parking plaza, if you will, will primarily be parking, I think the thing I would like you to explore is what is that ceremonial direct connection down from the townhouses, down through the site, down to the site below it? Because of the topography, it's this amazing, both step down from the long-term bike path. And so right now, you're showing what is likely just a little larger than a sidewalk and then even alongside the cars on that side. So to just explore that a little bit more with how it might align and then set the stage for what might be a magnificent way to come down to the river through multiple projects. I think that is the huge opportunity that needs to be explored, in my opinion. And I think I saw, I guess.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Actually, I think they're there. What I would advocate for is eliminating those cars between the buildings. And I mean, because I don't, you're parking 381 cars, I think you said. I mean, if you lost 50 cars, I don't know. I would, I would think of it as the inverse. I would say, let it be the public space first. You know, that's, that's how I would handle it. Because I, you know, again, I know you need parking, but I honestly, I think we're going to miss an opportunity if we don't make that the priority. So thank you. Just to piggyback on Madam Chair.
Sure.
I mean, I know parking is important, but what I would say is that if what August asked is possible, this could be one of the most important new public spaces in the flats that has a view and a vista that sees through the project below it, that connects to the long-range bike path. So it, both of these projects have the ability to now frame a brand-new vista to the river and to create a kind of a sequence of experiences. That is what we want you to explore. We're not going to design it for you now, but when you come back with that, I think that's the challenge is outside of just your project to do that. We'll tell you, I really like the. We'll tell you, I really liked the, along Carter Road, the way that you have kind of multiple design. I call them, you know, like the, some of the walk-ups there, some retail there, the, the kind of ceremonial vistas inside to the public spaces between the buildings. I think in some ways, this project, as opposed to the one across the street, has, has done a much better job of thinking about this not being a X hundred feet of, of what might also be not so exciting to walk by if you don't live here. But I think what you guys have done is create something that will create more life and excitement and people with eyes on the street. That's kind of interesting for me. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Just if you don't mind, Madam Chair, just to respond to a couple of those, those points. Happy to take a look at, at connectivity and work with the developer across the street and, and, and come back with that. And then to, to August's point on, on the parking, the parking count we have is just based off of what we've seen as demand for other projects in the area. The Edison and the view, and, and a few other projects. You know, ha- happy to take a, a look at what that could look like and even, you know, put together a parking study. But I think the, 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 the demand we see for parking on here, because again, there's, there's nowhere else to go is, is really how we look at it, at least at first. There, there's nowhere else to go. That, that could be a challenge, but happy to continue talking about it and take a look at it.
Madam Chair to the, to the applicant, but I think, I think you have an opportunity to test that assumption and not offer that parking, right? You know, and if there's a need, then that's a different conversation. I, I mean, you know, literally, I have not driven my car in three days. I mean, either I'm, you know, my wife and I are on the bus or, or we, you know, people are more flexible now. We meet in coffee shops, we meet. And so I, I think people are thinking a little differently now, in my opinion. Thank you. And I guess I would move, if, if there's no other conversation, to, to accept the presentation and project as, as presented with the caveat that the applicant addressed the connectivity, the overall master plan, comments by design review. And, and that's just for the buildings though. So this, the site will be back at a, at a future date.
One second. And a second, and that is a motion for a final approval of the design, the buildings. I would argue, my opinion is that, that as you, that you leave the door open when you're exploring now the connectivity, just a little bit longer to decide what is the better option in terms of the townhouses. I know your preference is the one with them split, and I understand that. But if for some reason, as you begin to revisit the site and you want to look at that, I think we'd be open to that. So up to you when you come back to really think about how that sequence of events actually or spaces start to shape up with the project below you. So, so as I said, final approval on the buildings, but coming back with the site and the connectivity and the parking. Anybody else before we vote? And I thank you for, for the really thoughtful presentation. Okay. Michael, you want to take the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Free.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Motion carries. I think that was our last one. So, and thank you, Councilman Hairston. Hopefully we'll have you back sometime soon. So thank you for, for being with us today and thank you to commission members. Marco, do we have anything else from the directors or before we adjourn?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Thank you all very much. See you in two weeks.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.